Thursday, July nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. I'd like to remind everyone, if you have any cell phones or electronics, please silence those. And if you'd like to comment on an item for tonight's agenda, please get your slips up to Ms. Jessica prior to the item coming up. Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Abshire.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please bow your heads and pray with me. Dear Lord, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen. Please turn and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Abshire. Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshire.
Here.
Mr. Andrew.
Here.
Mr. Bream.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Fornum is on vacation this week. Mr. Guidry.
Mr. Guidry.
Mr. Gitch.
Here.
Is here. Mr. Guillory.
Here.
Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie is unable to attend this evening. Vice President White is also on vacation. President Ferris.
Thank you. Item number four, Appearance by Students with the Sulphur Community Impact Program, which provides mini food pantries at schools and churches in the Sulphur community. May Ms. Heather Hohensee please state her name and position and address.
Yes, Heather Hohensee, two zero four Reserve Drive. Thank you so much for letting us speak this evening. I am the Manager of Government and Public Affairs with Tulorian and Dripwood L and G. And we're very excited to be part of the southwest Louisiana community. And as part of our commitment to engage with the community, we launched this year an exciting youth leadership program called the Community Impact Program. And basically, the premise is quite simple. We give a group of community-minded students twenty thousand dollars to identify and execute a program that's going to positively impact their community. So this isn't a theoretical exercise. They get twenty thousand dollars to do a real project. We kind of, we give them a few milestones, help them kind of achieve success, but pretty much the adults get out of the way so they can drive and lead the project. What this means is they're able to put in action and develop, really develop their leadership and team-building skills. So this is our first program we did with Sulphur High School. They have been amazing partners to work with. So we thank Principal Robert Berantine, Andrew The Crook, who is a teacher and also the program's sponsor. But the real proceeds do go to the students. And so kind of the philosophy of the program is the adult needs to get out of the way so they can present the project to you. And we hope that you all are as impressed with them as we have been. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves and speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So yes, we are a pilot program, and so we branded ourselves as the Sulphur Community Impact Program. So just some quick introductions. I'm David Spicer, and I serve as the President for this group. I would also like to introduce to my colleagues who weren't able to make it tonight. They are Olivia Reeves, who serves as our Secretary, and Gabe Guillory, who serves as our PR. So kind of one of the first things we had to do for this project is kind of survey what are the needs in the Sulphur community. Doing this involved having to meet with our principal, with the superintendent, with public information officers, and a bunch of different community leaders. So from those meetings, we took away literacy, homelessness, significant engagement as all issues in our community. But the main one that was stressed time and time again was food security, which is always an evolving issue in our communities in Sulphur. And so from there, we kind of developed a project that was meant to tackle that issue. And we came up with the idea of a mini food pantry, kind of as a catalyst to serve to address the needs of food security. Basically, what the pantry would do would just be be put in communities in high where food security is needed for those members. Basically, it just provides that food hy- food and hygiene products are readily available to them. So kind of just some specifics of what the pantry is meant to surprise. So the first thing we want to supply to our community is food. So this entails a lot of hearty meals, whether it's soups or meats, but also hygiene, definitely and always in high demand. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mike.
I'm Alexis Vostick. I'm the Vice President of our group. And this year, we have four locations. They are La Sallete, OLS, Maplewood Church of Christ, and First Baptist Church. And we are very excited to see how it turns out. For our funds, we initially stock the pantry the first time just to get them started, and then we leave any work fund for emergencies such as holiday seasons such as Thanksgiving and Christmas. Those are always very busy times when people are always in need of food. And then we also leave a fund for any emergencies such as problems with the box, for example, the glass breaking or something. We leave money just in case something happens. Our goal with this project is that we hope by making food pantries available throughout the Sulphur community, individuals in need will be able to have access to desperately needed items at these pantries. And that is our goal.
Any questions at this time?
One second. Mr. McMillan.
Hey, I want to commend y'all on coming up with this idea and thank you for what you're doing in the community. Hopefully, we can get other schools in other areas, and maybe y'all can be the template for something that's really good. Anytime you can help out people and feed people in southwest Louisiana, we sincerely appreciate it. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Scott.
Yeah, I ask you a hard question since you, you know, you're in adult land now. That's where they put you and say, hey, let them do their thing. So I'm curious how you've thought about making this sustainable whenever you run out of the twenty thousand because that's the real win. What are you doing now that's going to help this turn into something big?
Oh, yes, definitely. So the main premise, I guess the main challenge we have besides food security is implementing a project that is sustainable, as you mentioned. So kind of what SIP has to do is implement a project, partner with locations who can run the project once we leave. So kind of what we're doing right now is just heavily advertising in the community, but also meeting with our locations and giving kind of owner's manual for the pantry, who to meet with, what grocery stores to go for donations, how to advertise to the community, friends and family, and just really make sure not only that people are donating to the pantry, but that the pantry is being used.
Great job. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrew Pahn.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Mr. Spicer, if you ever compete in an rhetorical contest, call me because I'm going to put my money on you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pahn.
Move to receive report.
Second. Got a motion to receive report, and a second to receive by Mr. Guidry, second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Great job.
Great job. Very good.
Item number five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits.
Still move.
Ms. Wallace. Ms. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have one special event permit for you tonight, and we recommend approval.
Still move.
Second. Got a motion to take the action by Mr. Guidry, and a second by Mr. Guillory. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, consideration of approving payment on of all current invoices.
Move.
And advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pahn and a second by by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the strategic planning session of the police jury dated June eighth, two thousand eighteen. I have a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated June twenty first, two thousand eighteen. Got a sec, uh, excuse me, a motion by Mr. Bream and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item nine, consideration of adopting resolutions approving calls for election to be held on December eighth, two thousand eighteen by the Board of Commissioners of the following special service districts. A, Community Center and Playground District Number Three of Ward Seven for authorization of to, one, issue bonds not exceeding seven million dollars for a period of twenty years for the purpose of establishing, acquiring, constructing, improving, extending, maintaining, and operating within the district a recreational system and facilities. And two, renew, levy, and collect a combined seven point nine six mils ad valorem tax on all properties subject to taxation for a period of ten years for the purpose of paying construction, improvement, acquisition, maintenance, and operation of the facilities in the district. B, Recreation District Number One of Ward Four for authorization to, one, issue bonds not exceeding nineteen million five hundred thousand dollars for a period of fifteen years for the purpose of establishing, acquiring, constructing, improving, extending, developing, maintaining, and operating within the district a recreational system and facilities. And two, continue the levy and collection of a special tax not to exceed ten point eight nine mils for a period of ten years for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, maintaining, and operating facilities of the district.
I would move with all bullets.
Second. Got a motion to move on all bullets by Mr. Andrew Pahn and second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item ten, consideration of adopting a resolution approving issuance by Waterworks District Number Twelve of Ward Three of taxable water revenue bonds in the amount not exceeding two million dollars. I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Bream. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Take appropriate action. Item eleven, take appropriate action on request by Laura Goss et al. to abandon and revoke the original dedication of approximately two hundred feet of an unnamed road in the three hundred block of Goss Ferry Road in Ward One. I've got a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Oh, excuse me. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, July seventeenth, two thousand eighteen and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted. So we've got a motion to uphold planning and zoning by Mr. Latour and second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item twelve, take appropriate action on a request by top bid homebuyer LLC to rezone from mixed residential to multifamily residential to allow residential development, six duplexes in the sixteen hundred block of Thompson Road in Ward One. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, July seventeenth, two thousand eighteen and voted eight for and two against to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I have a motion to uphold planning and zoning. Oh, excuse me. A motion to overturn planning and zoning by Mr. Collins and second by Mr. Guillory. Any discussion?
Mr. President, we do have the applicant here if he'd like to hear from him. He is available.
Oh, don't have to do that.
It's, it was a call.
Is the applicant here for item twelve? Would you like, would you like to? Name and address for the record, sir.
Jack Manuel, address seven twenty U N Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana, seven oh six one one.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? This is an opportunity to tell us about the project. Would you like to tell us about the project, sir?
Uh, the project, what I did, I was asking for six duplexes. The other day, I dropped it down to four. Earlier today, I centralized site plan to the planners showing four duplexes. I had a meeting with Wes Crane last Thursday, I think. Talking to him is going to mimic the apartment complex I already did on the south side of Thompson Road.
Okay. Mr. Landry.
I guess Mr. Crane's not here tonight. Ms. Wallace? So in the planning and zoning meeting on Tuesday, it was changed from six to four?
Yes, he had also requested a variance to allow the six instead of four that's allowed by right with that proper zoning. And so he withdrew the variance at that time, and the revised site plan should be on your tablet if I'm not mistaken.
And that's what they voted on, eight to. So he would have had to, let's see, he wouldn't, he would have before needed a rezon and a variance.
Correct.
And so since he withdrew the six.
Withdrew the variance.
He doesn't need variance any longer, and it's only a rezon.
Correct.
Which is currently, it's mixed residential already.
Yes, and that allows one duplex per lot.
You could already have, so how many can he do by right?
He can do one under the existing zoning, but if he rezones to the R M, if you guys approve that tonight, then he can do the four duplexes.
Then he can do four.
Without a variance.
And mixed residential is mobile homes, homes, just a little bit of everything.
Correct.
Is that what is in this area? I don't, I'm not familiar with the road yet.
Yes, there's a mixture of homes, manufactured homes, and as Mr. Manuel mentioned, on the south side of Thompson Road, if you can pull up the aerial photography, he does have a development there with six duplexes on a lot.
And it's like directly across the street from this?
No, it's not directly across. It's about a block away.
Block away.
It's on the same road as the Dadeport.
Yes, and that was rezoned a few years ago. So y'all have approved something in that area.
Mr. Collins.
I'm asking to try to get this thing rezoned to go against the zoning and planning board because the people that live in that area right now is going through, we have apartments up there in that area and causing the people trouble with drug addicts, people like that in the neighborhood. So this is why we talk to the people that live in that neighborhood that's rejecting this product, to have this apartment put up. So that's why I'm voting to get, to vote against the planning and zoning board to keep from having those apartments up there because of the drug problem that's already in the area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Gilbert. Do you have a picture of the buildings or anything?
I have the revised site plan in the file, but I'm not sure.
I didn't bring any pictures to my. I haven't had any drug problems during, as Mr. Collins said.
Go ahead.
I haven't had any drug problems or raids or any problems from any other people that were renting from me. Like I said in the meeting Tuesday, I've recently had one of my apartments, fourteen ten A come vacant. When I ran that thing into Facebook, I probably had twenty phone calls within the first ten minutes. My rent's very reasonable. I'm renting around seven fifty a month for a two-bed one. I am the cheapest in Moss Bluff. I'm renting to the working-class people. I'm not asking nine hundred or a thousand dollars, which I see all over the place right now. I'm not doing it. We got good renters and people need to stay there.
Mr. McMillan.
So, Ms. Wallace, staff recommended this?
Yes, we did because we feel it's consistent with the area and because the previous request on the south side of the road had been approved.
Was, and I didn't see the zoning board meeting, was there much opposition at the zoning board on this?
We did have two speakers.
Okay. Oh. It was an eight-two vote, had two speakers, and he reduced it from six to four.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. We're going to have to do a roll call vote. Excuse me, Mr. Scott.
Yeah, Mr. Manuel, just a question, and this would be at Mr. Collins' preference. Would you be willing to defer for thirty days to get with Mr. Collins and see if there's anything you can do to work with the neighborhood or whatever? I'm just, just a question.
No, I wouldn't. I've been on property back there for a long time. I was buying it from Charlie and Johnny Guillory. The house was running down. The neighborhood looked nothing like it did when I started buying back there. The quality of the neighborhood really had improved. I'm not wanting to say anything against his remarks, but it's a good neighborhood and we have no problem back there. A lot of people like the one-way-in and out-like that because they don't have a whole bunch of people speeding and there's kids riding bicycles in apartment complexes.
You'd rather not defer if it hit with this?
No, I don't, why? I would need to defer it. After meeting with Wes, when I asked for the six, and he said when he measures it and looks at it in the area, the four duplexes fit while was consistent on the other end of the road, that's why they were requesting that it be granted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Ms. President. So, Ms. Wallace, that was going to be my question. Your department has recommended that be granted?
We recommended against the variance, but we recommend in favor of rezoning as long as the maximum number of units we can.
Which is what's before us right now.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. McMillan.
I think time would help us all get a better view of this situation. You're putting a juror in that area that's against it means a whole lot to me as an elected official. Because if I'm against something in my area, I like to communicate and talk about it. I would lend to you that it may be in your best interest tonight to defer it for thirty days. Give us an opportunity to really absorb what's going on right now because although planning and zoning recommended it and, but Mr. Collins is adamantly against it from some of his constituents, that has a lot of weight-bearing with the other jurors up here. I don't know if thirty days is going to hurt or help you, but I would hate to see you not defer it and get beat. So it may be in your best interest to let us defer this for thirty days.
Mr. Williams, I really appreciate your advice on that. I've never really gotten any help from Mr. Collins on anything that I've come in here. I've done everything to better that neighborhood. Give some of the people in there work, help me out. This is consistent with what was already down there. There's duplexes on Long Drive and beginning of U N Road. Tony Tarrell has duplexes on Verna Lane. There was a zoning off of U N Road where there's seventeen duplexes or townhouses that can be built right there. So the whole area, and I live there, I'm also a neighbor. I don't, I live as the crow flies, probably three hundred yards from this property. So it doesn't bother me one bit. And also, the people who came up here Tuesday to talk against the project, we had a discussion outside, and their main thing was not the duplexes being built. They were ticked off because somebody picked up their dogs next door. They were raising dogs or something. That's what they were upset about, not the duplexes being built. That's what they told me outside.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Andrew Pahn.
Thank you, Ms. President. I'll be very brief. I respect Mr. Collins' position, but only two people showing up for an issue and with planning and zoning, I mean, staff recommended to be approved. I don't think the first thirty days would be important. Iowa's worth a deal back.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Mr. Collins.
Mr. President, the people that are complaining about this, the people that live on Thompson Road where Mr. McMillan wants to put their apartment, he's staying where he live at, but he doesn't live where he wants to put those apartments. Thank you.
Sir, I did live there a while while I was going through my divorce, so I was a member of that community also.
If he has a question, but he does not. So, Mr. Bream?
No. Wonder if there's anybody in opposition here.
Is there anybody here this evening in opposition?
I wanted to speak.
Okay. Ms. Kathy?
Yes, sir.
We are voting for.
We give the ayes to overturn planning and zoning.
This is to overturn the decision.
Yes, it's to overturn. No.
No. No. No. Mr. Andrew Pahn?
No.
Mr. Bream?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
Mr. Guillory?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
No.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Ms. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Five ayes and six nays, so the motion failed. And now we can vote on the.
Mr. President, I would like to take a motion to all the rezoning, to uphold planning and zoning.
Move to uphold. Second. Got a motion to uphold planning and zoning by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item fourteen, take appropriate action on a request by Whispering Meadow RV LLC to amend ordinance number fifty-four fifty-two to allow a revised site plan. It's two thirteen. It's unlucky now, I bet. Item thirteen, take appropriate action on a request by Guidry Property Development LLC to rezon from single-family residential to mixed residential to allow residential development duplex in the nine hundred block of Tallow Road in Ward Three. Second. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, July seventeenth, two thousand eighteen and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I got a motion, Mr. Latour, excuse me, Mr. Scott, to uphold, and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Fourteen, take appropriate action on a request by Whispering Meadow RV LLC to amend ordinance number fifty-four fifty-two to allow a revised site plan, ninety recreational vehicles total at thirty-two twenty West Road in Ward Four.
Move to uphold zoning and planning.
Got a motion, the planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, July seventeenth, two thousand eighteen and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. Motion to uphold by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item fifteen, case was withdrawn by applicant. Item sixteen, consideration of adopting ordinances allowing for disposition of the police jury's interest in and donation to the city of Lake Charles for each of the following adjudicated properties. A, fourteen fifty-four Tasker Street. B, fifteen sixteen Jackson Street. C, eighteen hundred block of Graham Street. Second. Got a, got a motion by Mr. Latour, a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Seventeen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and GHD Services Incorporated for the maintenance and repairs of.
Still move.
Pasture Road from Frugé Road east to the end of pair maintenance. I have a motion by Mr. Latour, second by Ms. Mayo.
I have a question. Any discussion? Is the contractor here today?
Name and address for the record, sir.
Lane Babin, one six three five five Cheyenne Drive, Iowa A.
Thank you.
How you doing, sir? I just wanted to make it very fair and clear that the people down there are very vocal, so please do whatever you can to maintain the roads the best way possible because if not, they will call me every day, twenty-four seven, and I'll be calling you and everybody else. So please, please, just do your best to maintain the roads as best way as possible.
Absolutely. We will take it to fully the project.
Thank you, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Latour. Mr. Scott.
I guess this isn't something we normally see on hand. So just because he's using the road that much, it's better for him to maintain it? And I'm guessing that's in Mr. Wainwright? Is that what the issue is here? Is that what the issue is here?
I'm gonna actually defer to Mr. Teresa to come up and finish answering the question. But yeah, there's, there's a project out there. She can give you the details. She's been working with them to, and this agreement is fairly unique, although the last couple of years with all the business and growth, we've actually, about the third one that we've sort of done under this situation where we've had to really allow a big project to take control of a road because it's just beyond the ability of public works to expend those kinds of resources on one road.
To our specifications, to our inspections.
Yeah, absolutely. There's an agreement. You might remember Evergreen Road and some others have come through here where we've had to do similar operations, but Teresa can give you some details.
Yes, that's, that's the reason for doing it is that public works from a resource standpoint does not have the ability, um, to maintain that road to our standards on a daily basis that it's gonna require with heavy loads going across it, um, without other areas suffering. So in this case, it's, it's best for all involved that the road be maintained by them as they're using it. They have equipment on site, they're close to it, they can see when, when areas are getting bad, whereas if we wait for people to start complaining, it's really gotten further than it needs to be to get it a good repair. So, uh, we found with the Evergreen Road, we did a similar project with Burton Shipyard that's actually still under contract, um, and it's worked quite well in both of those situations. So we feel that this will be seamless as well.
What kind of big project is going on out there? What is, what is this project? I mean, we know Evergreen, we know, but this, this isn't exactly.
E and P remediation project, exploration production.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Scott, any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Thank you, sir. Eighteen, take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent for the following. A, retrofit bay doors project. Staff recommends that low responsive and responsible bid in the amount of four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars from Gunner Construction Incorporated be accepted. Move. B, collection and distribution pipe fittings and sign. All bullets. C, hills, science, diet, feline and feline food and bottled water. D, food commodities and food-related items for use by the Burton Coliseum Complex and food commodities and food-related items for use by the Office of Juvenile Justice Services. A motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Gidry. Any discussion? All bullets. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Nineteen is an advisory that adjudicated property will be offered for sale. Twenty, oh, we have, uh, excuse me, I have a point of personal privilege, uh, Mr. Andrew Ponte.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call up Mr. Arena, and while he's coming up here, I'll tell you what this is all about, give you a footprint. One night last week, I was watching K P L C TV, and they ran a story on animal cruelty in Borgard Parish. It was absolutely horrific. I don't know how many animals, how many dogs they had, but every one of them were all male and some were even infected with maggots if they, and I hate to put it that way, but that's what it was. So, uh, I have a soft spot in my heart for animals, and I took the liberty of calling Mr. Arena and, uh, and visited with him about what the consequences on Cauquay Parish if somebody would go to that extreme. So, uh, that being said, uh, Nathan, I'll turn it over to you, but first of all, I want to thank you and your staff for the competence and the good work that y'all do in Cauquay Parish. You might want, if you don't mind, I'd want to belabor the whole issue, but compare Cauquay Board, the resources, what is the difference, why that happens over there and why maybe that's not happening over here.
Okay, um, first of all, Nathan Arena, Director of Animal Services, as you know, but, uh, I realize I'm the only thing that's standing between some of you at supper, so I won't be that long. And, uh, Mr. Andrew Ponte asked me to speak on animal cruelty, and it is a real thing that happens daily. Uh, we have, uh, at the parish taken that very seriously, and, um, you know, if anybody ever come to the office, Mr. Latour did the other day, and Kevin White, a few others have come by, there's, uh, I took Shaylan's daughter through and showed her a lot of the equipment and things that are necessary to do our job on a daily basis. And, uh, we're really fortunate because our jury and our staff has taken it very serious in southwest Louisiana to put some programs together to be able to deal with these things. I don't think people realize the severity of, uh, animal cruelty sometimes and how sad that is. And then it's all connected to, uh, child cruelty as well and things like that that we see when we go in houses. Uh, we solve murder cases, we've, we've done all kinds of things as a result of trying to go in there and deal with animals. Um, we're fortunate too that to be able to do our job, we have good laws and, and good ordinances that you guys have passed and ladies have passed through the years that really help us, uh, when we go out there, not just go out there as exercise, utility to be able to, to just go out there and slap somebody's hand and let them do it again. But we have, uh, actually up, we can charge them with state aggravated cruelty, which is twenty-five thousand dollars per count and felony offense, and we've got several convictions on that. We have one lady that, um, was there at our parish that recently got, I think she's the twenty-one count, um, that they've, uh, filed on her, and she's in a lot of trouble as a result of that. Our primary response to that is to go out there and do a full-blown investigation. Uh, Sheriff Man Cuso has been very good to us and providing Sheriff's Department people that we work in conjunction with so that we have a very seamless operation when it was too big prosecuting, uh, cases that are, are large prosecution, those sort of things. The D A has stepped up, been very active in, in helping us get through those things. So, um, in addition to that, we have misdemeanors, and we have, uh, you know, the first thing we look at when we go out there is intent, what they intend to do. Negligence is not an excuse sometimes, especially if you've been informed. So, uh, you know, comment on Borgard Parish, uh, versus Cauquay Parish, uh, they don't really have funds, I don't think, for a, a program up there, and our parish reaches out to them, have worked several instances where we can help, uh, them even try to do some things in their parish. They are being a lot more active in a lot of these cases because they're trying to use the resources that they have to better serve the community, and I think, um, by far what you're seeing on television is a result of them actually, uh, working hard to try to, to clean some things up. One of the cases that they had, and I'm not gonna speak on their cases, but was really a guy trying to do the right thing, and he passed away, and then it just snowballed there. We see that a lot, and a lot of times these cases come from people who are really having a soft spot in their heart for animals, and it gets overwhelming, and they just keep going on, on that creative hoarding situation. I heard a stat today that really struck me significantly, and that was the percentage of hoarders, the recidivism of a hoarder going back to that lifestyle, it's a hundred percent. So, uh, that was what the national average has said. So it's, it's, uh, it's a real thing, um, but I feel like we're better equipped to handle it than we've ever been and, uh, have a lot of convictions to prove that. So we encourage people, the three basic needs of an animal is food, water, and shelter. And, uh, our parish is very, uh, in some people's eyes, probably not as strict as we should be, but in the eyes of standards of, of care, I think that, that our standards are very fair, and we try to work with people to better provide for their animals. So that all, if you have a question.
If I could just, uh, I'm glad you brought up what the consequences were, but, uh, if I were a judge and those people appeared before me, I would have absolutely no patience or compassion for them whatsoever, and I appreciate what y'all do and not on top of it. Thank you, Nathan. I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Mr. Latour?
Since you're up here and, uh, it was a good thing, Mr. Andrew Ponte, you know, just talking about animal cruelty, just wanted to shed some light. Me and my daughter did go there and spent a few hours with Nathan and toured the facility, and, you know, people have not toured, you know, my perception before going was thinking of, you know, the dog pound, you know, all animals, you pick them up and here you go, uh, you know, try to get a dog. Um, the processes and everything they do to, you know, to verify dogs, you know, everything, just a really neat thing to do, good thing, good animals. Uh, the process is amazing, great staff. I just want to thank you. I, I, my daughter literally talked about it for five days, wanting to go back every single day. I've, I've said they were closed. Pretty much, oh, they're closed, but thank you for taking us for a tour. She really had a great time, but, um, if, if, you know, the other jurors or other people's not been there, please do. Great animals, they, they take care and they do a great process, but I yield back and thank you again.
Thank you, sir. That, item number twenty. Moved to your second.